Being the Parker Town Council Meeting at 7:01 on November 1st, all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Hendricks and Councilmember Hefta, and we wish them a speedy recovery. But tonight, as you can see, we have a full house. And for once, it's not pickets, it's not something Josh did, it's not something John did, or anyone. But we have the Pine Lane Student Council, and we have Principal Stare with us in the back there. So, members of the Student Council are here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you guys want to come forward.
Oh, that is a big Student Council.
That is a big Student Council.
That's a Student Parliament, I think.
They'll usually get up by themselves. But whenever you're ready, if you want to tell us to put our hands over our heart, then the flag is right behind you. Just in case you were looking for it. All yours?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep going. Alright, guys, we're gonna get a picture with the council. I'm gonna sneak down.
Okay.
Stay up top.
We're going down below, or up behind?
Yeah, we're gonna stand behind.
Cool.
Make it easy.
Thanks.
Alright, everyone, big smile. And then we'll be sure you get a little bit of crystal in your table.
Don't know where I'm looking. Just got to the direction.
Everybody look to the right side.
Get the sponsors in here, too.
Yeah, bring it in.
Good on you, Eric. Okay, everybody look at the right one first. Alright, so what was the best thing about the Inger tonight?
The door first.
Ohhh. How much did that cost? Only five bucks. Thank you, guys, for coming. We appreciate you very much.
So I've got something I want to say to these kids.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, students of Pine Lane, I want you to...oh, I guess I'm off. I want to give you a little history about Pine Lane. So, it was the students at Pine Lane that spearheaded the drive to build the Cherry Creek Trail. So, thank you.
That's awesome. Great, great history there. So, I'm always afraid to ask the question what the favorite thing is, because, you know, they got to meet the Chief of Police, they got to see the Stonegate Mammoth, and so, you know, I'm always afraid that that's gonna be the big thing. So...
I think the favorite thing should be their first on the docket.
What's that? Awesome. Alright, we will go on to item number two on our business, Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. There's TJ.
Good evening. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Chamber of Commerce is kind of like a business club. Yeah, so I get to hang out with people who own businesses in Parker all the time. For some reason, they don't want to hear from me.
TJ, I think you're my son.
Oh.
Little green light.
See, that's the curse of going first. Alright. Good evening. Thanks again for the opportunity to bring you a Chamber of Commerce update. TJ Sullivan, President and CEO. Quickly, a contract has been signed with EMG Event Management to implement Parker Days for 2022. So, I'm very happy to finally have that contract signed. We now can start putting the specifics together. I don't have any to report to you tonight, but just know that we're putting that together. I should hope, I hope to have a public announcement of the dates by the time I visit you next month. We also plan to have an impact reduction and risk management plan to give you by the end of the calendar year, which was something that I told the Board I wanted to do when I took this job. So, we want to give the community a wonderful, locally focused event while also paying the greatest attention to safety. I also hope to reduce the footprint of the event in terms of square footage, attendance, and hours. I will be happy to provide more specifics as we dig into our work and as soon as we have permits filed and so forth. So, second item, our Economic Update Breakfast is scheduled for Friday, November 12th, at the Pace Center. Deputy Town Administrator Beau Martinez will provide the local economic development outlook for 2022. We're grateful for his participation. We will have Stephanie Muffick from Arapahoe Douglas Works talking about county issues around workforce development and employment trends, which is clearly a huge issue right now. We will have Lisa Strunk, a senior economist at the Development Research Partners and a former economist with the Governor's Office of State Planning and Budgeting, who will help us understand the state's outlook for the coming year. The public is invited to this Economic Update Breakfast event. Tickets are available at our website at ParkerChamber.com. And we are down to about two dozen spots left for that event. So if anyone's interested, they should purchase a ticket soon. Third item, speaking of workforce development, we know that many businesses in Parker are struggling with staffing right now. We are in the process of setting up a workshop after the first of the year for employers around the topic of how to keep a good employee once they have found him or her. It's our goal in the year to offer more trainings to assist our members as they struggle to staff their businesses adequately. Fourth, we continue to schedule about two to three ribbon cuttings a month as new businesses continue to open up all over the Parker area. We have celebrations scheduled at Vanguard Skincare Associates, Hearing Associates, a new office christening at Moving Memories, and the long anticipated opening of Cycle Bar in South Parker, hopefully in January. And finally, I'm very happy to let you know that our Vice President of Membership, Cara Massa, who you all know, was recognized last week by the Association of Colorado Chambers of Commerce as the Chamber Team Member of the Year for the whole state, for all of her hard work to keep the Parker Chamber viable during the harsh financial realities of the past two years. We're very proud of her and her contributions to the Parker community, and the award is richly deserved. I'll take any questions.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Barrington, any questions? Councilmember Dyak?
Sir.
Councilmember Pogue?
I'm anxious to see what you're bringing on with Parker Days.
Yeah, so am I. Yeah, talk about, talk about not sleeping at night sometimes when I get thinking about it.
Awesome. Councilmember Rivera?
No, that's great news. I'm glad you came and told us that today, and look forward to every envisioned event, and I will see you on the 12th. Look forward to that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yep, and I think you have a whole crowd of pre-sale tickets out here right behind you. So, you know, getting names and addresses.
Young voters, young voters. Okay, there we go. Alright, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Awesome. Thanks, TJ. Alright, up next is an update fresh off the zombie crawl. Omar Castillo from the Downtown Business Alliance. Did any of you guys see zombies roaming around the park on Sunday? Yeah, that was this guy.
That was Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday. No, you're good.
Could have been Sunday, I don't know.
It could have been. It drug into Sunday. How about that? So, good evening, Mayor and Town Council, Omar Castillo, Treasurer with the DBA. Yeah, Jeff, you just, you know, you started it there for us. We did our first annual zombie crawl on Saturday night. We did have, we're thinking around 200 zombies that showed up for the event. So, that was our goal. That's what we think we had probably while we were out and about. The other thing that we did part of that night is we did a scavenger hunt. So, part of that scavenger hunt is we loaded 15 questions for the east side and 15 questions for the west side. Questions, the questions consisted of taking selfies, answering trivia questions, and then also checking into some of the local restaurants and bars and stuff like that. So, it was pretty cool, because you got some questions from this side, like, for example, the doctor. And then on the other side, you got some questions over there, asked where the 20 Mile House was. So, it was a pretty cool little event. We had about 29 teams that participated and completed that particular event. What we're gonna end up doing is we're gonna actually leave that open for the next month or so, maybe even to the end of the year, so that random folks can participate in the scavenger hunt throughout the community. I know my kids definitely want to take part in that, because they didn't get a chance to do that. So, we're gonna leave that open for about another month or so, so that people could take place of that. The other thing we ended up doing, too, is we ended up having face painters on both ends. So, there was a face painter on the east end, and then there was a face painter on the west end. So, for those that showed up that didn't get a zombie, they could get their zombie face on. It's pretty hard to make this any scarier, but they were able to pull that off pretty well. So, we had a lot of fun with that. And then we had also some cool folks that came down. We had Mohawk Bob. For those of you who know Mohawk Bob or don't know Mohawk Bob, he has a hearse that he had parked out throughout up and down Main Street. So, that was a lot of fun as well. So, lots of people and lots of folks in the restaurants, the bars, and the businesses. We even put some QR codes in some of the actual businesses that people had to go in there, take a picture of the QR code as part of the scavenger hunt as well. So, people were all over the community, all over Main Street. So, it was very well, good success for us on that one. We're already planning the next one. We're already kind of starting working on the next one and kind of seeing what that looks like for next year as well. So, the other thing we're currently working on, we're in the process of surveying both the members and the non-members that are located in downtown Parker regarding business improvements that they want desired. Then Downtown Colorado Inc. will be our guest speaker for our November 10th meeting at Deep Space. This will be kind of like a town hall meeting where we will go over some of those results of our survey. Our Chair, Chris Schnell, will be going out with Councilwoman Barrington here within the month of November, visiting some local downtowns within the community, or within Colorado, in the metro area as well. So, they'll be doing that as well. And then they'll, we'll be able to sit down and go over those items as well. Couple weeks ago, we did our last trash pickup for the year. Looking forward to doing that again next year. And then lastly, but not least, we're starting to plan for 2022. You know, we're thinking about what activities do we want to do, what events do we want to do, and what does that look like, right? So, what we want to be able to do is start sitting down, sitting, looking at those, setting up committees, and within those, getting a committee chair for each of those events. And then what we want to do is we'd like to catch up with you guys, the town, at the beginning of the year. Sit down with you guys, let you know what events we're doing, what's it gonna take, how are we gonna pull these off, and how can we have these be safe, fun events for our residents of Parker. And then, and then as we continue to do that, we're gonna go into budget season for next year as well, and then get ready for 2022, and hopefully have a successful 2022 with great events. And then, lastly, but not least, Danette, we want to thank you for all your help and support with the zombie crawl. I know we were having some good conversation there towards the end. So, we appreciate you and all the departments and everybody at Town Hall and everybody at Town to let us pull off such a great event. And I was visiting with the Chief, and he said he got no complaints, and my phone didn't go off on Saturday or Sunday. So, must have been a good event for the zombie crawl. So, I'll take questions from you guys.
Awesome. Councilman Rivera?
None. I just appreciate the zombie crawl. Thank you for the DBA leadership, for continuing to create great events that benefit the businesses and satisfy the customers, satisfy the citizens. Well done, sir.
It's our pleasure. It's our pleasure.
Sounds like an event that will grow.
It will. It will. There's a, just like any event, right? You learn from it, you see what you can do, what you can improve. So, yeah, as we said, already planning next year. So...
Awesome. Councilmember Dyak?
No questions. Thanks, Omar.
Councilmember Barrington?
Just a comment. I know you guys, all the committees worked really hard to put that together, and I think you did a great job bringing east and west Main Street together for that.
Thank you.
And it was a great event, and I know next year will be better.
Yeah. No, it was a great event. We worked hard on it. You know, like, I always, these guys always hear me talk, so does Ann, and so does Josh. But, you know, we're all have full-time jobs, and we're trying to pull off these great events with no help, other than the folks within the DBA. So, yeah, and I think that's the big thing that we talked about, is how do we, how do we connect the east and the west end together and make it seamless, and make it work, and make it be successful for everybody. So, thank you, Ann.
Awesome. Now, Omar, I don't want to put you to any pressure with all these people behind you, but any chance trick-or-treat on Main Street next year might be a DBA thing? I mean, I don't want, I don't want them to pressure you.
Sure.
About kids trick-or-treating on Main Street, right?
Sure. I've got a 10-year-old and a six-year-old, so I never heard the end of it this year. So, yes, we'll see what we can do. We'll see what we can do. We can definitely work on that and see what that can really look like. We've, we've got some ideas already behind that, so we'll see what we can do there, for sure.
I appreciate it. Now, I've got 30 witnesses, too, so I appreciate that even more. So, thanks, Omar. We appreciate you very much. Alright, next up is public comment. So, public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak on items not on the agenda. The comment period is limited to 30 minutes in the front, and then we will finish up whatever is at the end of the meeting, and you're allowed three minutes to speak. So, public comment happens in three ways. One, in the room. Two, over Zoom, which Danette will have for us. And then third is by an email to the Town Clerk's Office by 5 o'clock on the day of the meeting. We have received one regarding traffic over at the Matzenbacher Stro Ranch area. And I believe we have one in the room tonight. Arlen Cook? So, Arlen, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, and I'll start your three-minute timer.
Arlen Cook, 12507 Venable Creek Street. I'm here to acknowledge with gratitude the work and the promises that have been made by the city to Stro Ranch and Anthology residents regarding the help with the many negative issues that have impacted us and our quality of life since all these new housing developments have been approved and created along Matzenbacher. Hopefully, the promises will hold true. However, there is the unresolved issue of traffic speed. We are continually told that Matzenbacher has always been designated as an arterial road, thus the higher speed. I'm here to set the record straight. Matzenbacher runs approximately four miles from Stro Road through Clark Farms. There is only a one, there is only one section of this road that has four lanes and designated 40 miles per hour. That is the residential mile along Stro Ranch and Anthology. The facts are, per public records and public works, that the Stro Ranch subdivision was plotted and approved in the mid-1980s, with the first home completed and occupied in 1988. The city, 11 years later, 1999, then took it upon themselves to designate Matzenbacher as an arterial road, and created just this one section with four lanes and a 40 mile per hour speed limit, right up against the ongoing home building in Stro Ranch. Again, not taking into consideration the impact on the built, the abutting residents. And so now, here we are, the residents of Stro and Anthology, suffering the ills of yet another poor plan on the part of the city. But thankfully, this all preceded you guys. However, we feel it is your responsibility to rectify this grievous error and lower the speed in this section. The speeds for the rest of the two and a half miles of Matzenbacher range from 25 to 35 miles an hour. And as I have pointed out previously, this is the only residential section of Matzenbacher that has a 40 mile per hour limit, speed limit. And yet, it is the only section that homes are built right up to the roadway, with one exception of Clark Farms, where the homes are built in a similar fashion. But, the only thing is, their speed limit is only 25 miles per hour. Hmm, this is a little disconcerting and unjust. Again, I thank you for your time, and I hope you take this to heart and act upon this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wishing to make a public comment? No? Danette, do we have anybody online?
There are no public comments.
Awesome. Then we will move into reports, items, and comments from Mayor and Council. So, I'll start to my left. Councilmember Barrington?
So, last Thursday, we had a Board of Directors meeting for the Douglas County Housing Partnership. And the meeting was largely informational, and we didn't have much that was directly related to Parker. But we did meet at the Audrey, which is a beautiful new building in a partnership with Shea Homes. And this is their first affordable senior housing project. There are 134 apartment homes, and they opened, I believe, just a little over a month ago, maybe a couple of months ago. But they are already 75% leased. That's about all I've had going on. Thanks.
Awesome. So, let's take a break just for a second. If anyone, Pine Lane, if y'all want to leave, or whatever, you're, you're welcome. But thank you all for coming. We appreciate you very much. Very much. We got the diehards here. That's great. Thanks, Councilmember Barrington. Councilmember Dyak?
Thank you very much. I attended, along with the Mayor, the State of the County, Douglas County, put on a fantastic event loan tree at the Marriott. Great to hear the successes of the county, and it cascaded down to the local municipalities as well. There were a few familiar faces in their video. A few.
A few.
Yeah. I had, let's see, E470. I had a joint operations and finance work session. We talked further about the toll rate policy. E470's toll rate policies does not extend past December 31st of this year. We were formulating a new toll rate policy, which the tolls will be reduced over a three-year period. We will vote on this on the, on Thursday, I think, believe the 3rd. No, that's the 4th, okay? On the 4th, the E470 Board meeting on the 4th. So, hopefully, we should have lower tolls on E470 come the 1st of next year. We also talked about our license plate imaging vendor. We had a very routine contract where we had to review the contract, and that's up for approval again on Thursday. As the E470 Vice Chair, I am a part of the Executive Committee. We had a discussion regarding a tolling services agreement with CDOT, the Colorado Transportation Commission, and a group of all-stars around, around the US regarding from New Jersey, Washington, and Texas, on how we can potentially improve working together and how to integrate the upcoming toll lanes, managed toll lanes that CDOT has, coming online, and E470. And with that, that is all.
Excellent. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I also attended the Douglas County, State of the County event. And I have to say, it was well done. And I, what I really liked about it was the quality of some of their videos. I thought they did a good job of trying to get their point across, especially with transportation. So, that's all I had, because John covered the rest of it.
Awesome. Councilman Rivera?
My apologies. I was under the weather and did not attend the Board of County Commissioners, State of the County. My apologies to fellow Council, the Mayor, and the County Commissioners. I really was looking forward to it, but it was better than I stayed away. I did. I will finish bragging. I did attend all day Saturday, the Marching Band State Championships down in Colorado Springs at the Air Force Academy. Ms. Rhonda Wiley was there with me also, and it was an incredibly long and wonderful day. I, you Chaparral kids can cover your ears, because I'm gonna talk about Legend, but Legend did finish sixth in the state for 5A schools. So, very, very proud of the kids, very, very proud of the team, and obviously, the leadership as far as Mr. Orlando Otis is, is just outstanding. And he did actually was at Chaparral before he came to Legend. So, just a great local guy, and just a great day to see so many great marching bands down, down at the Air Force Academy. I know the kids enjoyed it, and Air Force Academy always puts on a good show. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. Awesome. So, I only have one thing. I got invited last Thursday to go attend Ponderosa High School freshman game. And, you know, I gotta say, we all, we've all recognized this, Parker has had a dominance in sport this season. I, you know, we're gonna have some guys from, I'm sorry, some ladies from Legend come in the next month or so and be able to celebrate them. But I wanted, I, I made a promise to the freshman boys, so they had eight wins and two losses. They tied the school's record for the best all-time freshman team. So, I told them, if y'all finish strong, I'll put your helmet on the dais for a meeting. So, hope they're all watching, and I'm living up to my promise. But these, these guys work hard, and I, I was leaving as the other team was coming, and this, this other team was just amazing.
Yeah, I think us two Pondo grads, we want to see it right up front there.
Okay.
Where's the logo? Yeah, where's the P?
That's the freshman team. I don't think they get it. So, so let that drop off. But congratulations to them. And like I said, I think, to our Town Administrator, I think we've secured Legend at our first meeting in December to celebrate their amazing win.
Maybe we...
And we'll have others coming through, too.
Maybe we can ask Lutheran to mossle?
Great. We'll just, we'll just get a list.
We also have another one that we're looking at as well for December, another...
So, the track and field from Chapel.
Parker resident who came in first for something.
Awesome. Awesome. So, we'll get this through.
Very nice. Very nice.
We're becoming very polarized in our sports here. So, as long as Parker keeps dominating, we're good. We're good. Alright, with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Consent Agenda item is considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion unless Council asks for an item to be removed. Council, you have 6A through 6J. You have a total of 26 items on there. Are there any questions or requests for the consent agenda? Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 6A through 6J, please.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilmember Dyak. Please vote on Item 6A through 6J. Please vote on item 6A through 6J. And that motion passes 4 to 0. Next item up is our public hearing section. We have one public hearing for tonight, and that is for ordinance number 1.553. On first reading, a bill for an ordinance to adopt the 2022 budget and make appropriations for the same. And Mary, I've got a big red helmet in front of me here, but our finance director is here. So council, this will be a public hearing, so this will be the way I'll open the public hearing. Mary Lou will provide a presentation, and then you will have a chance to ask her questions on it, since this is a staff and we don't have an applicant here. We will move in to let her answer those questions, come back and opine. We'll open a public hearing for anyone wishing to make comment on the budget for 2022. We'll bring it back to the council for any debate deliberation, and then we'll vote on it. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:27, and Madam Finance Director, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Have to say, this is the second year in a row that I've had my hopes all up, because there's been this full council chamber. I'm like, yes! And then it empties out.
Lou, you got some diehards sticking in there.
I know. I've got some here. But I appreciate the opportunity to present the 2022 budget to you tonight. As we've talked in the past, one of the most important points, I think, to make in the beginning here is that we've been talking about the budget for a long time. And so while I'm going to kind of zoom through some slides you've all seen before, the fact that I'm going through a little more quickly is reflective of the point that we have spent time working on this. So I'm going to start on page 3 of the presentation, and this is where we've been. So we have had three sessions where we have talked about the budget, beginning at the end of September and going through October. We are now on November 1st. This is the first public hearing. We will have the second reading on, excuse me, November 15th, when we will ask for council's direction on the budget, and then we will meet our legal requirement of actually filing the budget by the end of January 2022. We have been living the budget internally since June. I have to tell you that when my team and I say this year, we do not mean 2021, because we moved into 2022 a long time ago. So with that, we're going to just take a quick look at the actual budget process that we used. And so we've got our guidelines first. We had four of them. The first one is a very common one that we've carried through for several years now with meeting our cash balance requirements. We have budgeted this year an operational recovery, which primarily affects cultural and parks and rec. So we will see if that continues to hold through. The numbers continue to be somewhat soft, so we will watch those very carefully. We have added one level of complexity to the budget this year, and that's as we balance our competing needs. We always have our expense, we have the need for additional employees as the town grows, and then this year, as a reflection of the master facility plan work that has been underway, we added that extra layer of our capital requirements. And those are capital requirements for the buildings that the town owns. And then the last item that we included under our guidelines is the maintenance and growth of our community programs. We know we've had to pull back in the past couple of years, and so we are restoring the funding for Elise and her team to come forward with even more and more creative activities for us to do. As we pulled the budget together, there were several concerns that we identified. First and foremost are the continuing impacts of the pandemic. We have had a very large amount of federal funding that has been available in the economy in general. We feel like that has been impacting our sales tax results positively, but Linda and I had the conversation again today, at least once a week, if not two or three times, of how much longer can this go on? And so that is a concern as we move into 2022. We also, as I mentioned, have budgeted that there will be operational recovery in two of our organizations, so that, again, is a concern, because we may see something drop off and have to take some financial action very quickly. We have had difficulty filling several of our roles here in the town. The police department has had maybe the most visible impact, but we've had that impact in several of our departments. So we've had the conversation around what does it take to keep the existing employees engaged, and what does it take to bring top-tier employees on as we need to fill open positions. We're going to talk tonight some more about the creation of a capital reserve fund. It's been in existence. We have not used it as a town. We are going to suggest, through the budget process, that we put a considerable amount of money aside into that fund to meet our future needs. And then the last bullet point up there also is a reference to that 10-year building plan that we have been discussing. Our budget assumptions, again, some of these we've touched on, so we're going to look at funding community activities at levels similar to 2019. We have implemented a compensation structure change within the police department, and that change is addressing the range spread, the step consistency, and compression issues. So that you will see as we talk about increase in salary and benefits, you'll see that number later on. We also have funded our performance pay and PD officer step plan at 4%. I can tell you that in touching base with my peers across the metropolitan area, we seem to be in about the middle. The percentage increases seem to be clustering between 3.5% and 5%. We have contained our growth in our discretionary expense area, and it's hard for you to see that, because we do that on the back end as we're starting to pull the budget together. We had the tenure plan as kind of a guide for us this year, and we had built in some assumptions about expense growth there, and we made sure that we stayed fairly consistent with that growth. We do have, again, as you'll see in some detailed slides as we go forward, double-digit growth in some of our areas, but that's reflective of us bringing our operations back up online and to the levels that they were in 2019. Again, we've touched on the future funding requirements, and then the last item is one of the items that I'm most proud of, that we accomplished as part of the budget process. You all have heard me talk about our scoring process that we use for capital. We've been doing that for the last three years. This year, we also implemented that for expense items. So we had our cross-functional team of about, for the expense side, I think we were probably up to around 15 people, who actually looked at expense requests that came in, and we went through that same scoring process. So that was a success. We felt like the scores were appropriate for where we thought things would fall out, so we will continue to use that as we go forward and continue to strengthen that process. So we're going to start with the general fund. So what is the general fund? Just as a reminder, this is our fund where the majority of the town's operations reside. So if you think about our police department, a lot of our public works, our streets, all of the administrative services functions reside in this fund. So let's take a look at what our sales tax revenue has been doing, and as I mentioned in one of the study sessions, it's kind of been a roller coaster. So we are much higher this year than what we have experienced in the past. I can tell you that we do not have October revenue finalized at this point, but our estimate is, on a year-to-date basis, we're going to be looking at an 18% increase. So I'm expecting at this point in the year, we're far enough through the year that I would expect that that will probably hold. And then it's anyone's crystal ball that can predict what next year's going to be. We use the 6%. That is in the range for historical growth, and rather than put the town at risk and budget our revenue aggressively and have to pull back from that potentially, it's a lot easier to address it from the other direction and say, we've got excess funds, and next year at this time, we can have the conversation about what's appropriate for the use of those funds. So our next chart then takes a look at our top five revenue sources. I would say there are probably three takeaways here. The first one's at the very bottom of that slide, where it shows the percent of sales tax to total general fund revenue. We are becoming more and more reliant, as time has gone by, on our sales tax revenue. And so that's why we spend most of our time talking about sales tax revenue with you as part of the budget, and also why we spend so much time up in our corner of the world talking about what's going to impact it and where it may end up for the year. The next item that is important from this slide is just the change in the makeup of our top five revenue categories. You can see that our highway user taxes have fallen out and been replaced by our electric excise tax. And the last item is the growth in total revenue. So I'm going to direct you to the, next to the bottom line in the last two columns, the 3.5% and the 5.3% growth rates there. I know that with the 12% growth in sales tax this year, and higher potentially, it seems odd that we would have total growth of only 3.5%. The reason for that is, is if we look at our 2020 revenue, we were the recipients of some funding. That was one-time funding, so that funding showed up in 2020, is not repeated in 2021, so we've had to replace that revenue and grow it even more in order to get to that 3.5% growth. From there, we can take a look at our total revenue by kind of our major categories that we look at. This is just to provide you with some additional detail as far as what makes up our revenue. With that, I'm going to move to total expense. You can see here, these are our primary categories that we use when we talk about expense. Several of these line items we're going to look at in more detail as we move through the presentation. We are looking at, in total, before our transfers out, a 15% annual growth, or $7.6 million. Again, as I mentioned before, a lot of that growth is related to us gearing up our operations at a high level again. So this is kind of the high level. Let's take a look at some of the detail, because here's more where the story is. Our salary and benefit assumptions assumed, as I mentioned, the 4% performance pay and police department officer's step plan. So that increase accounts for about $1.1 million in the growth in our salary and benefits. The PD compensation plan structural correction that I mentioned earlier accounts for just under $175,000. We have seven incremental full-time positions that are included in the general fund budget. We'll look at where those positions are in just a little bit, but there are seven of those. We, as a town, were able to keep our healthcare benefits to a 6.7% increase for next year, which is great. I think a lot of the numbers I've seen have been kind of around that, 8%, 8.5%, 9%. So we did a good job in keeping our expenses down. I think one of the primary contributors to that is a slightly tighter network that we have available to our employees through one of our plan options, and that seems to have worked out very well for us. The last item here is the largest item. It's a little over $2 million. This is related to the fact that, as we budget, as a governmental entity, we can't spend money unless it has been appropriated. So as we budget, we assume there's a button every seat. It's just the easiest way to say it. And that does not happen on a real-time basis. So in our 2020 numbers, we have vacancies that are there, because they've happened throughout the year. In 2022, in our budget, we are showing that every single position is full for a full 12 months. So because we have had a fairly high number of vacancies this year, we are showing that incremental cost of $2 million. One of the items that is not up here, because there really isn't much expense associated with it, is the inclusion of Juneteenth as a holiday for town employees. The TA's office worked with HR, and they decided that was a direction they would like to recommend. Because of the way we operate with our full-time employees, if we grant a day off, we really don't pay those employees any more than what we do today. The two departments that will have some impact could potentially be our Parks and Rec Department. However, they have a large number of part-time employees that they can rely on, and so there really shouldn't be any additional costs there. And then in the police department, there will be some incremental overtime amount, but it should be minimal. So you do not see that included here, but it is something that has been implemented by the TA. As we go forward from here, our supplies, this whole category is increasing 12% for next year, a little over $130,000. The primary contributor to that is the additional cost of some supplies in our police department. So we're looking at a TASER maintenance contract, increase in the cost of uniforms, purchase of rifle plates, and then also some furniture within the police department. The bottom two lines here are kind of some of our operational costs that is increasing due to employees being back in the office and all of us working at the level that we were before with those types of expenses. So we are expecting to see some expense increase as we, again, gin up all of our activities. Our purchase services are another major category. Donette? Thank you. The first one is our repairs and maintenance. This is being driven by our public works department. If you think about it, our town just keeps growing, and so we have more lane miles available that we need to take care of. In our 2022 budget, we are including just right at $1 million of incremental cost for resurfacing and concrete work for those lane miles. Travel and training is coming back up to our pre-COVID levels. Our vendor and contractor expenses are increasing primarily due to a community development plan, and then also increased legal services within the courts. The special events are increasing $29,000. This, again, is the money that I referenced earlier, that has been restored to the communications budget for community activities. Capital is not a major expense of the general fund, so we do not have a large amount of capital expenditures here. The budgeted projects for the year total $2.4 million. As you'll see, as we talk about some of our other funds and activities, we have much larger amounts than some of our other funds. Again, we used our scoring process for these activities. They include everything from starting the design work for a potential town hall expansion to town hall roof replacement and purchase of a truck. So you can see, I think out of six projects, it counts for about 90% of the dollars. And here is the last slide on the general fund. This slide brings everything together and shows our revenue, expense, and then some detail around our transfers out. What I want to highlight here is, one, the transfer to the cultural fund. We'll talk a little bit more about this as we get to the cultural fund, but we do have that growing for 2022. In 2021, we are showing just over $29 million being transferred out to the capital facilities reserve fund. This is the savings account that we've been talking about, that will help us to fund our future infrastructure needs. And then you can also see the very bottom line. We are maintaining that 25% cash to total expenditure ratio that's required here in the general fund. With that, we're going to shift gears into our special revenue funds. The first one that we'll take a look at will be our Parks and Recreation Fund. This is our fund that is primarily dedicated to capital projects and construction of our parks. This is our fund that is primarily dedicated to capital projects and construction of our parks. The majority of the expenditures here are related to those projects. We have capital in 2021 of $7.4 million, in 2022 of $4.1 million. And then the difference between that and those expense totals that you see up there are the transfers out that take place from this fund to the Rec Fund and also to the general fund. What I know is of most importance to council and also to the public are the projects that we're going to take underway during 2022. Again, this is a listing in priority order of the projects that we have identified as staff and where the emphasis will be taken. You can see in some of these items, it would seem like the dollar amount is fairly low. We may, for that project, be on the front end, where we're incurring design costs only for 2022, or we may actually be on the back end of a project, where we're just wrapping it up and we know we've got some warranty work going on. The next fund we'll take a look at is the Recreation Fund. Here, again, just to emphasize, we have budgeted for recovery in 2022. You can see that with the growth in our revenue numbers. Our revenue also in this fund reflects the emphasis that the Parks and Recreation Department has put on cost recovery. So there are some increases in the fees that the department charges for certain activities that are being implemented this fall, and also then will have more impact coming in 2022. About 2/3 of the revenue comes from charges for services in this fund, and then the remainder is sourced out of the Parks and Recreation Fund. We do, and we talked about this during the study session, but I just want to emphasize that for governmental agencies, cash balance is kind of the primary indicator of whether we're healthy or not. And you can see, for the Rec Fund, our cash balance in 2021 is projected to be fairly low. We have taken the steps to, as I mentioned, see an increase in revenue. We've also controlled the expense growth so that we can be back more at a level that is a little more sleep-worthy at night, so we don't have to worry about it quite so much. The highlights for the Rec Fund are, again, the charges for services are budgeted to recover, so we hope to see that. And then I also mentioned the fact that we have the impact of the cost recovery study in place. Capital expenditures here are kind of like the general fund. They're not very large at all. It's under half a million dollars and basically dedicated to the replacement of aging equipment. Our next fund is the Cultural Fund. This, again, is budgeted for recovery, and we'll see how well we achieve the numbers that are here. Here, our revenue source is split about 50/50 between operations or fees for the performances and classes, and then about 50% with the transfer that comes in from the general fund. The cash balance here in 2021 is very similar to what we saw with our Recreation Fund, actually. And here, again, we are also pushing to get that cash built back up through the increase of the dollar amount that is being transferred from the general fund. Summary here, again, is very similar to what we talked about in the Recreation Fund. One of the things we haven't touched on yet in detail is the increase in positions. We have eliminated one full-time position within the Cultural Fund and replacing it with two new positions. This seemed to meet the need of the Cultural Department much better to have these two positions. It is not a dollar-for-dollar situation, but we did have some savings from the elimination of the one position. The capital expenditures in this fund also are very minimal for next year, and basically here also are related to the replacement of aging equipment. Our Capital Reserve Fund. So this is our fund where we are creating what I've referred to as our savings account, the place that we will build up our cash to have access to cash when we need it as we embark on a potential infrastructure program. It also will provide that cushion in the future for if something happens that's unanticipated within our buildings, that we can tap into this fund for those purposes also. The 2021 shows a revenue of $29.4 million. This is the transfer that will come in from the general fund to actually be the seed money for this fund. As you've seen with the budget adjustments for 2021 that Jen covered you on last week, this is the driver of the large dollar amount of activities that we have going on with those. Our 2022 budget also allows for us to increase that cash balance. We're anticipating another $9.3 million being transferred in from the general fund to this fund. All right, we're going to get into our Public Improvements Fund. This is where we do all of our big streets work. You can see that with the dollar amounts that are shown here. Our revenue in this fund does go up and down. 2020 is quite high, but that's because we had the borrowing that P3 did, that then they transferred over to this fund so that we can fund some of the construction activities within our blighted areas. Other than that, the other major drivers here, I would say, are developer contributions. Those, the contribution levels do vary considerably from year to year. And then our expenditures also vary year from year due to the capital projects that we have underway. And the next two pages actually take a look at the road construction that we are anticipating for 2022. Again, this list, there are items on here that the dollar amounts are very low, because it's either the design phase or the wrap-up phase, and we have a couple that are good-sized also. I'm not going to go through each of these individually, but this list is out there along with the presentation on the internet for the public. All right, with that, we'll move into our Excise Tax Fund. This fund receives in all of the excise tax revenue for the town. You can see that it's been growing over the last couple of years, and that's reflective of the rate increase that was implemented. The expenditures are basically transfers out typically to our Streets Fund, our Public Improvements Fund. And then also in 2022, we are anticipating a $1 million transfer out to our Parks and Rec Fund. Our Enterprise Fund is our area where those activities of the municipal government that operate like a public business reside. The town has one of those, Stormwater Utility Fund. And again, this fund has the ups and downs that are similar to what we see in our Public Improvements Fund. Our revenue goes up and down primarily based on developer contributions, and then the expenses also go up and down based on the programs and projects that are being undertaken by that group. The operating expense on a year-by-year basis runs about $2 million, so you can see that the level of capital activity truly makes a difference. This page lists the projects that are being in priority order that are being undertaken in the 2022 budget. All right, we'll move into our Internal Service Funds. So these are areas of our town operations where the costs that are incurred are actually charged out to the other departments. The first of these that we're going to take a look at is our Fleet Services Fund. This fund provides the repair and maintenance activities for the town fleet and also the replacement of existing fleet or purchase of new vehicles. So our capital over this three-year time period is running fairly consistent at about $1.6, $1.7 million. That's part of that expenditure line. And again, the revenue comes in from the other various departments here at the town. Our Facility Services Fund works much the same way. Here, in 2021, the projected column, you can see we've got, and in 2020, we can see that we've got a fairly low fund balance. So we did work through the 2022 budget to bring that up a little bit, and we'll continue to stay focused on that. We are impacting that cash balance by a $100,000 transfer from the general fund. The revenue, again, here is from our charges for services out to the departments, and then the expenditures are basically for personnel costs and then purchase services. Our Technology Management Fund is in good shape here. Our expenditures in this fund are primarily personnel and software, which are split about 50/50, and then we have probably about half a million dollars each year that's dedicated to hardware purchases. So we're going to take a look at just a couple more slides, but I'm going to stop here and just kind of tie this all together and say that I think that if you reflect back to the beginning where we talked about our guidelines, I think we have met those for 2022. We have focused a lot on our cash balances in our various funds. I think we will have them all in a healthy place by the end of 2022. We have budgeted for that operational recovery in 2022, and we'll watch that very closely. And then we've also hopefully achieved, and again, there are more than, there's more than one way to do it, but we've achieved it in one way, hopefully, of keeping that balance between our operating expense, our capital needs, and then the need to grow personnel here at the town as the town continues to grow. For reference purposes, the next slide is a look at our additional full-time equivalent employees. As I mentioned when we were in the general fund discussion, we are looking at adding seven FTEs. During 2022, there is a reduction of one, so we are looking at a net increase of six. The Cultural Fund is looking at a net growth of one, and also the same in our Rec Fund. So we have a total net new positions going in through this budget of eight. The next two slides, take a look and pull together all of our inner fund transfers. It's kind of easy to slide over these, but some of them are fairly large in their dollar amount. Again, here, probably the biggest takeaway is the transfer that is projected from the general fund to the Capital Facilities Reserve Fund in 2021. And then the very last item included for reference is a list of the town's existing debt and financial obligations. The maturity dates, the payments, and the balances are included. And with that, I'm going to stop and take a breath, then.
All right.
Turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so council, we will have a Q&amp;A period with the director on this, if you have any questions. And give Danette a heads up if you want to go back to a specific fund. So if you need to go back to that slide, give her a heads up so she can zoom back there. But we'll start to my left with Councilmember Dyak.
I have no questions.
Okay. Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, I'll have some comments.
Okay. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, you talked about the cost recovery in some of these programs, and I know that that's ongoing in both the cultural programs and the recreation programs. Are they fully in place now for the cultural programs or not?
Are you asking if cost recovery is in?
Right.
Not at this point. I mean, we are still seeing some COVID hesitation. So, and it depends on the area. Our rentals are up quite a bit. People are wanting to have space to hold weddings and meetings and birthday celebrations, but they're still a little bit reluctant to come sit in a closed theater right next to strangers. So it's dependent on the, on the program.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, sir? Councilman Rivera?
Danette, can you go back just one slide to the obligations? Thank you. So just real quick, for my own edification and for the public, can we just talk a little bit about the Capital Reserve and the town's history in the past when we needed new buildings? I.e., most recently, well, not most recently, but recently, the Pace Center and PD for a combined value of, or build cost of $42 million. And the tools that we used back then were COPs. Can we talk about that? Can you talk about that a little bit in relation to what we're looking at now as we near build-out, please?
Sure. So back when both the Police Department building and the Public Works Operations Center and the Rec Center were all built, the town made the decision at that point in time to fund those activities partially through the issuance of certificates of participation. So this is a tool that basically is a lease. These amounts, if we want to get real technical from an accounting perspective, do not qualify as debt, but for our conversation, that's where we put it. But we do have amounts, the principal amounts are still remaining out on these two, or all of these buildings. So we have $30 million outstanding on our Police Headquarters Building, and then $17 million on the Public Works Operations Center and the Rec Center. I would assume, I wasn't here then, but I would assume that there was some cash that also went towards building these buildings. The town is in a very unique situation right now, partly, primarily because of the impacts COVID has had on our sales tax revenue. And so we have been in a position where our cash balance in our general fund has been growing, and the recommendation through the 2021 budget adjustments and then also the 2022 budget is that we take a good portion of that growth in our cash balance and move it over to our Capital Reserve Fund. So the town, if council approves the budget, would be taking a different approach this time than last time. And I think that as we go through a potential 10-year building program, the town will be in a fairly good shape to be funding most of that building activity with cash. It gets a little soft when we get out at the end of 10 years, as you can imagine. I'm not going to promise that it's out there, but in general, it should be. So this is something, we can always take different approaches to this. We can do this with cash, we can do it with debt, we can do it with something in between. One of the issues in issuing any more instruments similar to the certificates of participation would be we are looking at doing some expansion to some of the buildings that already have these lease obligations on. And so we are most likely going to need to get the bank's approval to do the expansion to those buildings when it comes time. But the buildings are probably not necessarily valued at an amount much greater than the principal that's outstanding. So we really would have no basis to support that additional debt. But I am happy to continue the kind of funding conversation. I think it's next week that the study session includes the master plan facility update. So council will have the opportunity to see that in much more detail and see what is being recommended by the consultants that we hired. And then we can continue, the financial side of it will be one part of the conversation that needs to continue.
Thank you, Director.
Very much.
Thank you.
I think I would delve into the comments, which I was told last week is probably not the best.
Councilmember Barrington gave you the hint, so, okay. All right. So then we're going to go to a time of public hearing. If there's anyone in the room that wishes to make a comment on the proposed 2022 budget, or Danette, if we have anybody online?
If you are the caller, please hit star nine on your phone if you'd like to speak, or raise your hand if you're... or raise your hand if you're online. No comments?
Okay. Anyone in the room? All right, so we'll bring it back to the council for the comment and update. Mary Lou, do you have anything else to add? Okay. Comments, sir?
Yeah, no, I think just to kind of further that, that concept of we want to be good financial stewards of the citizens' taxpayers' money. You know, we're approaching full build out, and I kind of equate that to retirement. Give a fixed income, if you will. I'm a financial planner, so I have to use analogies here. So, you know, with that, we have, we have some debt, and the debt is at pretty preferable rates on a relative standpoint. And we also need to pay down and pay off that. We also need to honor our future and, and fixed capital expenses. So we need to have that cash. We asked the Finance Department to do a 10-year projection and bring in all the operations, all the capital projects, and all the debt to make sure that we were good. Or if we were too good, we could do something nice and maybe cut some taxes. But the, the feedback we got was, you know, based on all of our 10-year projections, that we don't quite have enough, but, you know, I think we're, it's a workable situation. So we're going to monitor that. And, you know, my goal is to, if we can get to retirement or full build out and have no debt and, you know, take care of all the capital projects, I think that's probably a good thing. The only other question, or the only comment I have is transportation. You know, I think that's a, that's a pretty important part of who I am and what I've been. And I think there's some exciting projects coming to, to make life better for our citizens. We couldn't do it without a lot of partners and staff, honestly, too. So, you know, Tom up there, he's, he's pretty humble, but he's, he's helped greatly. We have county people as partners. Dr. Cog, we have E470 coming to potentially help us out. And we have, we have developers who, who normally would probably not want to be mentioned, but we cannot do what we do on these major roads without the help of those developers. And we, we have two or three in the, in the audience right now. So they are actively willing to, to help us out to make our roads better for our current citizens and future citizens. So thank you to everyone.
Great. Thank you, councilmember. And before we move on, I'm reminded that the public hearing closed at 8:06, just for the record. So, Councilmember Barrington?
Well, Councilmember Dyak, I think, covered a lot of what I was going to say.
You want more? You want more?
Just one question. Is there anything in the budget where we can get more heat in this room? I appreciate everything, all the research that you have done, the time. And I know there were a lot of man-hours that went into this, so thank you for, for your expertise.
Councilmember Pogue?
No, thank you. I think you've answered most of my questions, and I think there are some things that we'll be looking at in the future.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, thank you to the finance team. You guys are outstanding. You don't get a lot of accolades, yet you should. PD sits back there and takes all the hurrah's. No, I'm just kidding. But you guys, I mean, to state, you know, that you spent six months on this, and, and here it is, the culmination, your, your claim to fame is tonight and two weeks from now. And it, it's amazing, the stewards that we are with the citizens' investment. I'm very, very proud to sit up here and, and, for lack of a better word, sign the checks that we do, because I think we do it very wisely. I think we do it very prudently, and I'm very, very proud. A few kudos. One, priority scoring. I've always been a fan. We, we pushed and pushed that for, for years. It used to be called something else, but it, it worked very well for capital, and I'm very, very happy that it's going on the expense side now. I think this year was a, was a success story, and I look forward to seeing it evolve. PD range and step plan, hugely needed, brilliant work on, I think, obviously, Michelle Chief and yourself, Mary Lou, on getting that done. We're competitive again, and we're filling some voids and just incredible work, and happened at a great time. And then lastly, the, the capital revenue. This one's, you know, it's tough. You know, we sit here and we're stewards and, you know, it's $40 million. What are you doing, you know? To me, it's an anomaly. I have to look at it. If this trend continues, then I will be the first one to figure something out and get citizens back their dollars. But if this is an anomaly, we need to take advantage of this and save it. We got a lot of criticism when we did go out for COPs, you know, from maybe my, my conservative friends that, you know, what are you doing? Use cash. So here we are. We've got cash, and we're going to use cash, and, and we're looking forward to that. And as John, or sorry, as Councilman Dyak touched on, we're getting close to build out. And I don't want to see this community have debt when we don't have growth anymore. So very, very happy, not happy with COVID, but very, very happy we have this, this year of revenue growth, and we're able to fill the coffers, if you will. So well done to the team, and thank you very much.
All right, we'll close debate on the issue, and I will entertain a motion on the ordinance 1.553.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance, sorry, wrong ordinance, ordinance 1.333?
553.
55, 553 on first reading and schedule second reading for?
November 15th.
November 15th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I thought I pulled it up.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Dyak. Please vote on this ordinance. And that ordinance passes unanimously. Moving on to item number eight ordinances. So we have, I believe, four topics here, and we're going to take them in two chunks, correct? We're going to take the opioid, and then we're going to take the emergency orders and kind of do them in two big chunks here. So opioids followed by alcohol. Exactly. It's a good mix. It's a good mix. All right, so item, the first item is on opioids. We have ordinance number 9.341 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the Colorado Opioid Settlement Memorandum of Understanding Between the State of Colorado Acting Through Its Attorney General and the Colorado Department of Law and the participating local governments, including the Town of Parker. And then we have resolution number 21-047, a resolution to approve the subdivision settlement participation form, settlement participation form and Colorado subdivision escrow agreement concerning the nationwide opioid settlement. Mr. Maloney, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. There are four separate agreements that are associated with the opioid topic. The first is the memorandum of understanding between the Colorado Attorney General and participating local governments, which would include the town if you approve the memorandum of understanding. And it is to share in the proceeds from a nationwide settlement with some of the nation's largest pharmaceutical companies that made and distributed opioids. Under the settlement agreement, $26 billion will be paid out to state and local governments nationwide. The state of Colorado will be paid approximately $300 million. Locally, the Town of Parker will receive approximately $250,000, and this will be paid out over 18 years. My understanding that a large portion of this will be front-loaded, but again, we're learning the details as we go through this. Douglas County will receive $2 million as a local government. And there's also going to be a Douglas County as a region, which will be composed of a separate legal entity, and that entity will receive approximately $6.5 million. The way the settlement works is 95% of the local governments with a population of over 30,000 people, which would include Parker, must agree to the settlement by December 29th of this year. The second agreement is called the subdivision settlement participation form. If the town council approves this form, the town will be waiving any claims that it may have against the 1,003 distributors of opioids that are the subject of this settlement, and they're also listed out individually in the distributor settlement agreement. The third agreement is called the settlement participation form. And if the town council approves this form, the town will be waiving any claims it may have against certain manufacturer of opioids. Again, the former agreement being that for distributors, this is for manufacturers of opioids, which would include Johnson &amp; Johnson, Jensen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, Ortho, McNeil, Jensen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Jensen Pharma, Inc. And finally, the last agreement is called the Colorado subdivision escrow agreement. This is an escrow agreement between the town and the Colorado Municipality. They are, they are serving as the escrow agent to receive these three settlement agreements. And if the 95% threshold is hit on December 29th, then these agreements will be distributed to the Colorado Attorney General's office. If this is not hit on December 29th, then those agreements will be returned to us, and there will be no settlement. So that's basically a summary of the opioid settlement documents that are before you this evening. The MOU is the subject of the ordinance, and the resolution is the subject of the other three agreements. Any questions, Mayor, council?
So council, questions for Attorney Maloney, Cheryl?
Yeah, it's just one. I'm assuming you want two votes on this, right?
Correct. There'll be one, one vote for the ordinance and one vote for the resolution.
Josh, anything?
Yes, sir.
John, Anne? Okay. So we were going, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment for anyone in the room wishing to make a comment on opioids. Danette, do we have anybody online?
There are no comments.
All right, then we'll go ahead and close the public portion of this and bring it back to the council for any comments or debate. Councilmember Barrington? Nothing? Councilmember Dyak? Pogue? Rivera?
No, I'll just state that at first, I didn't quite know enough about this. This is something that I read a lot into and realized the impact is directly relatable to Big Pharma. So I, I do see a need to, to, for our community to benefit from their dollars since they have done damage to our community. So I am in favor of this.
Excellent. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.341 on second reading.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 9.341 on second reading.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Please vote on 9341. And that ordinance passes four to zero. The second piece of this is resolution number 21-047, sorry. And I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll move to approve resolution number 21-047, or 047.
And I'll second.
And that motion was made again by Councilmember Pogue And that passes four to zero. So we are going to take the next three, correct, Jim, ordinances and discuss them all together.
Yes, sir.
So the next topic will be ordinance number 5.28.27 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 5.02 of the Parker Municipal Code relating to takeout and delivery permit notification. Ordinance number 5.28.28 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 5.02 of the Parker Municipal Code authorizing communal outdoor dining areas. And last is ordinance number 5.28.29 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 5.02 of the Parker Municipal Code relating to festival permits.
The three ordinances that the mayor just read into the record are the product of Senate Bill 2182 and House Bill 211027, which were enacted by the state legislature this year. The special licensing authority has reviewed all three ordinances in our recommending town council approval. Ordinance 5.28.27 extends the ability of certain liquor licensees to sell alcohol for both takeout and delivery. And this would be through July 1st of 2025. Under House Bill 211027, the licensee obtains a permit from the state for takeout and delivery. The only requirement for the licensee concerning the Town of Parker is to give the town written notice, and that notice would have to be within 10 days of receiving the state permit. So it's a very simple process with the Town of Parker. Ordinance number 5.28.28 authorizes two or more licensees, and again, the list of licensees are contained in the ordinances, it has to be of that specific type, are allowed to establish communal outdoor dining areas and to serve food and alcoholic beverages within these outdoor areas. The town clerk is authorized to administratively approve the communal area subject to certain conditions under state law. And there's also one local condition associated with our permitting process. So the first requirement is there has to be two or more licensees must apply for the state, to the state and the town for a permit. The outdoor area must be no more than 1,000 feet from the license premise of all participating licensees. The license premise for each participating license is modified to include the outdoor area, so they essentially take their liquor license with their existing premise, and they would expand it to include the modified area, which would be the outdoor dining area within 1,000 feet. And these, and again, just to point out that you can have a special event within this outdoor area if the permit holder agrees in writing to adhere to the Colorado Liquor Code and all local rules. So that's the, the second ordinance. The third ordinance, number 5.28.29, authorizes liquor licensees, and again, the list is described in the ordinance, to host festivals under a festival permit. Again, the town clerk is authorized to administratively approve a, a festival permit. Again, there's going to be some conditions attached. The licensee is required to obtain a state permit. The licensee is required to obtain a town permit. The licensee is required to obtain a community event permit for such festival held in the town, and for each that follows if they're in the town. Once the required permits are issued, the licensee can hold up to nine festivals during a 12-month period, but no festival can last longer than 72 hours. The permit that's issued by the town and the state will define the area where alcoholic beverages can be served for on-premise consumption, so any alcohol that is consumed must be consumed within that particular festival permit area. And the permit holder must have the legal authority to occupy the area where the festival is being conducted. So that summarizes the three ordinances that are before you. Any questions, Mayor, council?
Questions? Anne, John, Cheryl?
Yes, sir.
Cheryl, any questions?
No.
Okay. Excellent. So seeing no questions, we'll go for a public comment period. Danette, do we have anyone online?
If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on the phone. No comments.
Okay, we'll close that public comment and bring it back to council for any comments. Councilmember Rivera? You can do all three at once.
I, all three at once. Again, COVID was, was tough. It's been a long 19 months, and there are good things that are coming out of it. And, and this is one. I, I believe in, I believe in responsible adults having the freedoms they, they deserve, and we shouldn't prohibit people's freedoms because of what could happen. So I am very, very happy that the state sought, sought to, to instore some of those freedoms to our liquor license holders and to our, our citizens. So I'm very, very happy to move forward on all three of these ordinances.
Excellent. Councilmember Pogue?
No, I don't have any comments.
Councilmember Dyak?
No comments.
Councilmember Barrington?
I, I'm happy that we are going to be able to move forward on all three of these as well.
Excellent. All right, we'll close debate, and I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 5.28.27.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5.28.27, sir.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Please vote on 5.28.27. And that passes four to zero. I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 5.28.28.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve 5.28, ordinance number 5.28.28, sir.
I'll second.
And motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Please vote on ordinance number 5.28.28. And that passes four to zero. And last, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 5.28.29.
I move to approve ordinance number 5.28.29 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Rivera. Please vote on ordinance number 5.28.29. Please vote on ordinance number 5.28.29. And that passes four to, oh, you're a clean sweep. Good deal. All right. Next on to resolutions, the Anthology North Project. So we have an agreement that Tom's going to walk us through. We also have a resolution number 21-022.1. We're going to take this as a, one package, so I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution in, and then Tom will give you a chance to do your presentation. I understand we have a semi-applicant presentation?
Yes, sir.
I've never called you a semi-applicant, but you know.
[laughing]
And then we'll go through the process. So, resolution number 21-022.1, a resolution to amend resolution number 19-023, series of 2019, to allow, subject to the satisfaction of certain conditions, a partial waiver to defer compliance with certain requirements of Section 13.07.060 and 13.07.070 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance as amended, associated with the processing of the sketch and preliminary plan for certain segments of the real property commonly known as the Anthology North property until those segments are ready for development. It's all yours, because I can't go anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening. I'm Tom Williams, Director of Public Works and Engineering, and I wanted to start off by saying I apologize to Councilmember Barrington for the temperature in the room. My facility staff must have known that I was giving a presentation this evening and wanted to keep everyone awake.
[laughing]
We do the same in Jim Maloney's office. So I am going to be presenting on both items this evening. The first is the amendment to the Stroh-Hess Ranch Annexation Agreement, and the second is the amendment to the partial waiver resolution pertaining to Anthology North and their development phasing. Both of these amendments pertain to the construction of Chambers Road as it goes through the development itself. These amendments that we're presenting to you this evening are based on several months of negotiations that town staff has had with the developer of Anthology North, E5X, who is being represented this evening here, Chris Elliott and Matt Jenke with E5X, and then NPI, who is the underlying property owner, Mr. Scott Selden, his company owns the property, and Mr. Kurt Walter is here this evening representing NPI. So before we go into the details of the amendments, the agreements, I think it's important that we give some background on Chambers Road, why it's important to the town, and maybe also go over some of the proposed development that's occurring on the south side of town and how that kind of wraps into what we're talking about this evening. So this is a map of the major roadways on the south side of Parker. Parker Road is the guerrilla, runs north to town, starts, you know, far, far south, Douglas County, but it really funnels a tremendous amount of traffic through the town. We also have other major roadways shown on this map. Hess Road running east to west, Stroh Road. There's also some other roads that are being built in unincorporated Douglas County to the south that hopefully will be siphoning some traffic off of Parker Road and tying it into Chambers Road. Many years ago, before any development occurred on the south side of town, Chambers Road was actually called the Parker Road Bypass. It was really envisioned to try and take traffic off of Parker Road. The transportation engineers back in the 90s realized that Parker Road was going to be very congested, and we needed to find a parallel route or an alternate route to Parker Road. And so decades ago, town engineers, county engineers came up with an alignment for the Parker Road Bypass. And this was important because there wasn't much development on this side of town, but we needed to have a general alignment for this roadway to ensure that as development occurred in this part of town, that they would set aside enough land to be able to build this roadway. And fortunately, development has, or will, as part of development. Bayou Gulch Road intersects Parker Road down by Ponderosa High School. The county staff decided to continue this naming designation as it goes through Pradera. And when Pradera developed back in the late 90s, early 2000s, that developer actually built half of what ultimately will be a four-lane section of Bayou Gulch Road through that development. Bayou Gulch, as it continues to the north, includes a section within the Trails of Crowfoot Development, which is under construction right now, just south and east of Crowfoot Valley Road. And that developer, who happens to be the same gentlemen that are in this room, built a half-section of Bayou Gulch Road through that development. That ultimately will be a four-lane roadway. And then there's some segments in between there that you can see on this map that I've admitted, that's in blue and in yellow. The blue section of Bayou Gulch Road, that's currently under construction within a development called Cielo in unincorporated Douglas County. That section of Bayou Gulch Road will probably be open within the next six months to a year. The county has also indicated that that yellow section, that segment that will connect Bayou Gulch Road between the Cielo Development and Pradera, they have that in their capital plans to be built next year, possibly into 2023. So within the next couple of years, we're going to have Bayou Gulch Road completed from Parker Road all the way up to Crowfoot Valley Road. So as you move north, Chambers Road, the naming designation changes from Bayou Gulch Road to Chambers Road at the intersection of Crowfoot Valley Road. Same thing, north of Hess Road, the town required the developers to set aside land and build half of Chambers Road, which they did, between Hess Road and Main Street. And soon thereafter, the town and the county actually widened that section of Chambers Road to the section it is today, which is a six-lane principal arterial roadway. The portion of Chambers Road that's in red is within the Hess Ranch, Stroh Ranch, or now what's called Anthology North, and Looking Glass Development. And similar to Pradera, similar to what occurred with Chambers Road north of Hess Road, they are required to set aside enough land to be able to build six lanes of Chambers Road, and they are obligated through annexation agreements to build three of those six lanes as their development progresses on that property. So this is a larger-scale map of the Anthology North PD or Anthology North Development, and this is kind of an existing conditions map. What's important to note here is that Hess Road, which borders Anthology North to the north, that was also built as a half-section by all the development that borders Hess Road to the north. So Douglas 234, or what we call Horse Creek now, Horse Ridge, which is at the intersection of Hess Road and Matsumbaka Road, they built half of Hess Road as part of their development project. Well, we quickly realized after we built that, or the developers built those two lanes, that it was becoming overwhelmed. And so the town and the county, back in 2012, advanced the construction to widen Hess Road. Well, we advanced it because the Anthology North developer, or property owner, was actually obligated to widen Hess Road as part of their annexation contracts. We couldn't wait for that development to occur just because of the amount of traffic that was on that. But fortunately, we did include a provision within their annexation agreement that they had to reimburse the town and the county as they developed their property. And so within the annexation agreement for Anthology North, there's a reimbursement provision that requires them to pay us back the $7.7 million in today's dollars that we spent or we fronted to widen Hess Road, and that's to be paid back to the town on a prorata basis with each building permit that's issued within the Anthology North Development. And this is important for a couple of reasons, which I'll get into here in a minute. So I know this is a busy map, and you're probably going to have a problem reading all the text that's on there, but I really wanted to highlight kind of what's, what's occurring and what has occurred as far as roadway construction in this area, and what some of the development obligations are for the construction of Chambers Road and Hess Road on the Looking Glass and the Anthology North Development properties. So what you see here in black, see if I can get the cursor to show up here. So the Looking Glass developer has already constructed this segment of Chambers Road, which is in black. They've built this Collector Road, which is called Spirit Trail Boulevard, and they've also built Stroh Road from that intersection to the intersection of Stroh Road. As part of their annexation contracts and the partial waiver resolution, they're required to, they're required to build those roadways prior to the release of the first building permit on the Looking Glass property. Their next phase of development, which is in Segment Two, Looking Glass Segment Two, which is this pink area, as part of that development, they are required to extend Chambers Road from the intersection that they terminated on with the first segment up to the intersection of Stroh Road, including constructing the Stroh Road intersection with Chambers Road. And then as part of the second phase or Segment Two of Looking Glass, they're also required to build the full four lanes of Stroh Road, which is highlighted in purple, between the Collector Road that they built in the first segment and Chambers Road. So we're processing development plans right now for that next segment in Looking Glass, and in all likelihood, they'll be under construction within the next six months or certainly the next first half of 2022. So moving to the north, Anthology North, which is what we're here to talk about this evening, similar to what occurred in Looking Glass, except for working, instead of working from south to north, they're working from north to south. Their first phase or first segment of development, they're required to build three lanes, three of the six lanes of Chambers Road from the Hess Road intersection to the south. So see if I can get my cursor to show up here. So that's this green line here, and prior to the release of the first building permit on the entire property, that developer is required to build three lanes down to Bramwell Drive, which is the road that it terminates at or that it intersects with, that is the Collector Road that ties into the Anthology Development. They have submitted plans. We are reviewing plans for that, and they're on track, similar to Looking Glass, to start that first segment of Chambers Road, probably first half of next year. The second segment, which is kind of in gold, that would complete that whole section of Chambers from Hess down to Crowfoot Valley Road, that gold section is part of their next phase of development. And that's what we affectionately refer to as the gap. And that's what we're here really to talk about tonight, is the timing and how we can get that gap built sooner rather than later, or before their next phase, if you will, of So, you know, again, based on the development plans that we've been, that have been submitted by Chris Elliott, E5X, it's unclear with the existing agreements that are in place and what they submitted, when that gap is going to be constructed. You know, if the housing boom continues, if development continues the way it is, there's a good chance that that gap segment of Chambers Road could be built within the next couple of years, you know, soon after their first segment is built on Chambers Road. But there's nothing in our agreements that we have with them right now to build it any sooner than they would unless they, they go into that next phase of development. So the thing that's to keep in mind here is that, that first segment that they're obligated to build, that meets really all their fire access and safety and circulation-type needs for their first phase of development. They have that section of Chambers Road that ties into Hess Road. They have other roadway connections that they're making to Hess Road as part of their first phase of development, to Hess Road and to the adjacent subdivisions. They don't need to have, to develop their first phase, this gap section built. However, it's important to the town, it's important to the residents, and it's really important, I think, to our overall transportation network that we get this gap built, that we get Chambers Road connected between Hess Road and Crowfoot Valley Road sooner than later. So town staff has been working with these gentlemen that are in the room for the past several months, and we've come up with what we think is a coordinated solution, which we've incorporated into these amendments that are before you today. That solution includes accelerating the construction of the gap with a time trigger for their, for completion within their first phase of development, and I'll get into in a minute what that means. This amendment also includes a provision to where not only do they build the three lanes that they're obligated to build within the, within their property, they're going to build the full six-lane section. That's, that's a solution that's been incorporated into these amendments. Another thing that we've incorporated into this amendment is the construction of pedestrian underpass. Right now, they are obligated to build one pedestrian underpass as part of a regional trail that goes underneath Chambers Road, but there's a pretty long gap between where that underpass is and where the next underpass is. And so the developer team has agreed to actually build an additional pedestrian underpass, which will improve pedestrian safety within this corridor. And as an incentive to offset the additional expense that's incurred by the developer, we've also included in these agreements their ability to utilize that Hess Road reimbursement to, to use for the widening and all these improvements, which is really good for us because, and it actually works out very well, because that Hess Road reimbursement is very close to the actual cost to do everything that they're talking about doing, that they weren't obligated to do prior to these, prior to this amendment. So just because I'm visual here, and I want to make sure everyone understands what, what these amendments include, is this green segment of Chambers Road, again, this is their first roadway obligation, this still is going to be required, three lanes, prior to the release of any building permit on the Anthology North Development. The trigger for the construction of the gap, which is in orange, would be one year from the time that they actually build, have that completed and opened up to the public and the town has accepted. Within one year, they will have completed the gap as well, and have that constructed and ready for acceptance and opening to the traveling public. Within that same timeframe, that one-year period, they've also agreed to widen Chambers Road to its full six-lane section. So that is going to run within the same timeframe as the gap, and then because the pedestrian underpass goes underneath the roadway, they've also agreed to include the construction of that pedestrian underpass within that same timeframe. So, so with that, I mean, that basically summarizes what the amendments look like. You know, the, the proposal, we think, is a good one. We think that town council should, should consider it and approve it. There's a number of reasons why. Again, it advances a major regional roadway connection, provides relief to existing roads, Parker Road, Matsumbaka Road, which we've heard public comment on before. It also, building this section of Chambers Road will increase the amount of traffic that would be going past a lot of commercially zoned properties within the Anthology North Development and Looking Glass, and make them pretty viable for development sooner than later. Another benefit to approving these amendments is having the developer widen this section of Chambers Road is going to save the town a considerable amount of expense and staff and resources, because this is something that we were planning on doing five to seven years from now. Now, the developer would be doing this on behalf of the town, which will save the town a considerable amount of money. And then this agreement allows, really, the town to utilize a reimbursement that we would not fully realize for many years, which is the Hess Road reimbursement. As you recall, that reimbursement was coming on a prorata basis with each building permit. Well, if it takes 10 years for all the building permits to be issued on Anthology North, that's when we would fully realize that reimbursement. Here, we get to actually make that money work for us and get Chambers Road widened sooner than later. I mentioned the pedestrian underpass, great separated underpass that's included in the agreement. And then lastly, and this is an important reason really for me, is I think this is a great example of a private-public partnership, and I want to recognize the gentlemen in this room, Kurt, Chris, and Matt, for really stepping to the, to the plate here and, and helping us come up with a solution that I think is a win-win for, for everyone. And so with that, I'll be happy to take any questions, and Chris and Matt and Kurt are also here to answer questions for council.
All right. We will go ahead and open up for staff questions. Councilmember Barrington, questions?
That's a lot to take in, just some clarifying questions.
Sure.
So this project would have taken five to seven years minimum?
So the widening, the widening of Chambers Road was a project that we had planned five to seven years out. We had other priorities in town that we had budgeted for. We had other priorities in town that we had budgeted for, were planning to budget for. And so what this agreement does is it actually builds a full six-lane section, probably five to seven years faster than if the town were to widen the road on our own.
Okay. And the developers had no obligation to do this, just working in collaboration, because everyone saw the need to have this expedited. Everyone worked together to get this moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. No other questions.
Councilman Dyke?
Thank you. So the underpass, I know that was kind of like a late discussion topic that we had. As a point of reference, we did an underpass on Jordan. What's the value of that if we retrofitted that versus incorporating that into design and actually, you know, planning?
That's a good question. So the underpass that we built underneath Jordan Road cost us about $1.2 million, and that was for a four-lane section. This underpass is going to be going underneath a six-lane section, and so if I had to guess, it probably would be valued at one and a half million or so. We didn't have as many, we had a lot of utilities that we had to kind of work around on Jordan Road, but the depth and the length of this underpass, it's substantial. And if we had to go back in and retrofit it after the road was built, it probably would be safe to assume that it'd be approaching one and a half million dollars.
Okay. And to kind of build on Councilmember Barrington's thought process, is there a quicker path other than the path that we're currently going down to build not only the gap but to expand Chambers Road to six lanes?
Not if we're doing it. And the reason I say that is we, as a governmental agency, have to go through annual budget appropriation. We also don't own the land right now. So if town council told me, Tom, go and build that, start right now, it would take me probably a year to do preliminary design. It would take me probably another year to do final design, perhaps even some more time to do some property acquisition, and then we'd have to bid it out and then construct it, which would probably be, probably take us a little bit longer than they would, because they have the ability to do a lot of things out there that we wouldn't. So three to four years. If you told me, go, here's all the money that you need, go and do it from today, it'd probably be three to four years before we get everything built that they're agreeing to build for us.
And again, timeframe, three to four years for us versus the current path where...
I'll let Chris talk about that.
All right. So a couple of clarifying questions. We, the Town of Parker, so it's roughly around a $7.7 million project, is that...
Roughly. We estimated the widening as a capital project at about eight and a half million, if we were to build it five years from now. We've done, with the help of their engineer, they've done an engineering estimate, and it's right at about seven and a half to eight million dollars is what they're going to be spending on the widening and the pedestrian underpass.
Yep. So we have a future CIP project right now, about eight and a half million for an expansion that we would have to use resources. And again, the value of money, you can only assume would go up higher to eight and a half million. What would our, with this potential proposal, what would our out-of-pocket be of the Town of Parker?
Zero.
Zero. There you go. So again, I'll refrain for the comments section, but again, it's just, it's all about partnerships, and I will continue this conversation.
All right. We'll put a pin in that one. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, you'd mentioned two underground crossings, underroad crossings. I saw one on the map. Where's the other one?
The other one is, I'll go back to the map. So Oak Gulch is a major drainage way that runs through the Anthology North development and crosses Chambers Road right about here. And so as part of the roadway construction, they're going to have to build a bridge for Chambers Road across Oak Gulch, and so that regional trail will be alongside the gulch and go underneath the bridge at that location.
Similar to what we've done with Sulfur and Pike's Peak then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Revere?
Thank you, Director Williams. That has been hinted at, but the savings cost of doing all six lanes at once is huge versus coming back and retrofitting three lanes in. Can you speak to that just a little bit about how that would, the town would, I mean, there's obviously roads we've widened in the past. Cottonwood Bridge comes to mind. I mean, there's big ones, so.
Yeah. You know, when we had to widen Hess Road, you know, had the developer built all four lanes as part of their project up front, it probably couldn't be built for, at least the widening section, for, you know, two-thirds of what we ended up spending on that widening. And that, again, is time is money, as Councilmember Dyke had mentioned. Construction cost indexes, they rise, you know, anywhere from three to 5%. This year, unbelievably, it's actually gone down a little bit, but on average, the construction cost index goes, it beats inflation every single year. And so you're looking at 5%, 6%, 7% increases in construction costs, and so just that amount of time, us accelerating or allowing them to build this five years, six years in advance of us, we're saving potentially 5% to 7% on the money we otherwise would have been spending in that same timeframe. So it's really beneficial for us to get things built as quickly as we can just because of that.
And then, much to some developers' chagrin, not the gentleman in this room, but, you know, we raise the standard of our road bases. But this road, though the town's not involved in any of the building, this road will be built to our new standards, correct?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you, sir, very, very much. Appreciate that.
So Tom, I just have a couple of questions before we get them up here. You know, I think one of the things we failed to talk about was the roads internal, not just Chambers, but the roads internal. So can you talk to, like, Bramwell, the development of that, and then the two punchouts on Hess? And when all that stuff comes online?
You bet.
The internals?
So Bramwell Drive, again, which is the roadway that will be intersecting Chambers Road, which is where the first phase of Chambers Road is going to be built, that actually exists right now in the existing Anthology North, excuse me, existing Anthology development. Bramwell Drive right now intersects as a Collector Road, Kaiser Creek, French Creek, this loop that goes around in a circular path within this subdivision. So this Collector Road is going to be built as part of the first phase, I believe, of their development, which is great for the existing residents within Anthology North, because right now, there's only two ways out of Anthology, and that is Matzenbacher Road. So this will provide a good backdoor, if you will, exit out of the subdivision and get them to Chambers Road, and if they want to go to points north and west, this is going to be a good alternate for the residents that live in Anthology. There are other roadways. Great Plains Way is another Collector Road that's going to be tied into the existing Anthology development. Great Plains Way is going to be constructed with the first phase of Anthology North, and it's going to intersect French Creek right near the elementary school. Again, another backdoor exit for the Anthology development. And then we also have a couple of, one Collector Road that's going to be built in this location that's going to intersect Hess Road at Tammy Lane, and this will be another alternate for residents to be able to exit the subdivision.
Would that be lit?
What's that?
Would that be lit?
It's, yes, it is warranted. It will be warranted to be as traffic signal at some point, yes.
Perfect. So if you were driving a big construction truck, what one street would you stay off of? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Loaded answer. All right. Council, any other questions? All right. Mr. Elliott, come on up. I feel like we should swear him in under oath, just so we get that on the record.
Much for that. Well, it's a real pleasure to be here, and listening to Tom describe the negotiations, it's made me stop and wonder whether we really made such a good deal or not. I do have to say that, excuse me, you guys have the best staff in the metro area, and we need to do a shout-out to Tom and Alex Mezda on the engineering side, who do an absolutely tremendous job for you and for us. And then the parties to the left here, Mr. Maloney and Kristin Hoffman, they have your best interests at heart, but they also, all four of them, as well as other parts of your staff, are willing to think way outside the box. In fact, I was thinking about the negotiations with Tom as we were moving along, and it reminded me of buying my first car, where you walk in and the guy says, "So if I go ahead and give you the white wall tires, will you buy it?" And it's, "Well, yeah, that's a pretty good deal." And then I'd have reservations, and then he'd come back, "Well, if I put windshield wipers on it, will you buy it?" And it's suddenly become an even better deal. And in Tom's case, he would say, "What's the impediment to getting this done?" And I'd give him something, and he'd come back and say, "We can overcome that." "Well, what else?" "Well, there's this." And he'd come back and say, "We can overcome that." And that kind of thinking and that kind of an approach to doing business is refreshing, and you guys should be very proud. But I really think the culture behind all this emanates from the council. You know, if you guys didn't encourage your folks to behave and act that way, then it wouldn't be possible for us to be able to come in and make this kind of a deal. In an effort to just pat ourselves on the back a little bit, we had anticipated with our first phase of doing half a Chambers from Hess to Bramwell and spending about $4 million. By the time we're done, we're spending almost $18 million to build the entirety of the roadway. And yes, we get to offset that. Some of that we were going to have to do anyway, but there was going to be a timing component to it, which was going to make it a lot easier. The Hess Road reimbursement, we're going to have to pay that as well, too, but we were going to do that on a permit-by-permit basis, and now we're going to do the whole thing. But again, staff came in and helped us with some things that made financing that kind of improvement at one time just that much easier. And we're going to build it all at once. We're not going to stop and build pieces of it. The agreements provide that we have certain segments done by certain points, but that only means that when we complete that first segment, we'll already be deep into the second and third segments, because that's the way we'll have to do it in order to build it as one thing. So, and the faster we get it done, the cheaper it is. So there you have it.
Excellent. Questions for Mr. Elliott?
No, no questions.
No, I don't have any questions.
So it's a little tongue-in-cheek, and I think it goes to your first bit, but why would you want to take on an $8 million obligation of the Town of Parker and accelerate something you're not contractually bound to do? I mean, a little bit more about the why and the visioning of your perspective and how important that roadway is to not only your development, but the Town of Parker?
Well, I think a lot of it goes to market conditions and financing opportunities that we have to come in and do it, and part of it's the right thing to do. You know, here's an opportunity for us to partner with the town. We obviously have one of the last larger development parcels in the town to do. We're going to be here with you guys for a while, so why not make you like us a little bit and do something that works for us and for you? And it works for these guys, you know, getting the road done so that the impact on Matzenbacher can be lessened just as soon as possible. We want you to see and benefit from that.
Thank you.
Councilman Barrington?
No questions.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to open it up for public comment at this time. Anyone in the room wishing to make public comment on this topic? Come on up, Mr. Jewitt, if you give your name and address, and I'll start the clock for you.
Okay, Steve Jewitt. The address is 12521 South Sopris Creek here in Parker.
Great. Go ahead, sir.
I live close, actually a but, Matzenbacher Road, and I think Arlen and I may have started some of this process by complaining, and I think, as the council knows, we've had tremendous difficulties on Matzenbacher Road with construction traffic, speeds, the volume of traffic, trucks waking me up at four or five in the morning, and it was not a pleasant experience, and it's still not a pleasant experience. I wanted to speak to express appreciation, first of all, for listening. I think this probably started maybe just a little over a year ago, but there were some serious problems on Matzenbacher. We were told it didn't look like anything was going to happen soon, and somehow this came together, I think, a little faster than people expected. So I want to express appreciation, first of all, to the town council for listening to Tom and his staff for working on it at your direction, and I hadn't expected to do this this evening, but the developers as well. I didn't know they were going to be there. At some point in the past, I was sort of thinking, they might be the enemy here, but as we found out, they're actually an ally in getting this done. So there's a lot of appreciation here for what's being done. I do want to just quickly mention, though, that, you know, the problems on Matzenbacher are not going away right away. We still experience tons of loud truck noise. We still have lots of cars speeding on Matzenbacher. These are non-local aggressive drivers that are coming from distance points and using Matzenbacher as a shortcut. And I just want to ask that the town council keep that in mind, if there's any way we can address the noise from the construction traffic, such as diverting some of that to Parker Road, whether it's the northbound traffic or the southbound traffic. Among other things, I will be able to sleep a little better at night, or at least sleep in the morning, not having to listen to that traffic. And then, secondly, the speeds on Matzenbacher. Arlen mentioned them. I don't want to dwell on it. I believe the speed limit needs to be reduced and needs to be vigorously enforced, because there are a lot of very aggressive, non-local drivers that go very, very fast on Matzenbacher Road. So thank you again for all the help on this project, and we appreciate all that's been done to expedite the completion of Chambers Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Anything online?
There are no public comments.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close out the public portion of this, and council will bring it back for any comments and debate, and I'll short to my left, Councilmember Barrington.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, what time we were closing the public hearing?
I'm... Just kidding. What was the public hearing?
It's not, it's not. I'm kidding.
But 9:03, just for identification.
I think that this is, the collaboration that went into this, and as Mr. Elliott said, thinking outside the box, I think, on so many levels, this is going to make a lot of people very happy, maybe not tomorrow, but a lot sooner than it would have happened. So great job, and I appreciate everyone working together on this.
Councilman Dyke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, it's just, it's partnerships, the ability for people to get together and start talking about trying to achieve, you know, achieve resolution on certain things. You know, a couple of out-of-the-box thoughts were thrown up there many, many months, if not a few years ago. As to how we can do this, it certainly challenged, I think, our staff. Mr. Elliott articulated, our legal department and public works department were certainly in the forefront of trying to figure out, how can we do this to bring this road to our citizens faster? But to ask someone to find $8 million to do a road when they're already doing probably hundreds of other things on this large-scale project, I could see would be challenging. So, you know, kudos to our legal team, our public works team, and our developers. And, you know, this is another route, if you will, once it's done. This is the beginning. It'll take some time to get this contiguous, so people can use it as more of a parallel route to Parker Road. You know, to kind of rehash, Matzenbacher also is a parallel route to Parker Road. Enforcement, I think, would largely help. Continuous enforcement would largely help some of the issues the public comment brought about. But as we continue to grow, not only in Parker but south of us, Matzenbacher is going to continue to... Matzenbacher is going to continue to, to continue to, to gain traffic as well. So this will not be a, a longer-term solution, but it'll, it'll help. And hopefully, it, it provides a little bit of respite, so, so citizens could look forward to this and gain some, some positivity, at least for a period of time. Thank you.
Councilman Pogue?
So I just have a couple comments. First, the issue of development, traffic, and noise has been going on in Parker for 50 years, and we're not done yet. It just moves. So as you complete development, it moves to the next development. So you're not alone. There's a lot of people who've gone through the same process. So, but what I do want to do is thank both the developers and staff for coming up with some ideas and letting us move forward with those and driving those to a solution, because it takes more than one group to put a solution like this together. So congratulations to all of you.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Thank you. Sorry, I pointed out the time because I wanted to acknowledge our two members from the public who have sat here through lovely, enlightening speeches about budget and opioid and, and whatnot, Arlen and Mr. Jewett, thank you so much. Matzenbacher, I've always been up here, I've always pointed out I don't like VIP lanes. And VIP lanes are, are two-lane roads that end in one lane, and, and you get people that race. I believe that your answers from speed, some speed will be answered when we, we widen motts on the north side to four lanes at Hess, and when we widen motts on the south side to four lanes at Stro. Maybe we won't get so many speed racers that are trying to get by those four cars, because they need to be first. I, I do believe that leads to some of it, so I hope to see that answered in, in another way. Secondly, obviously, to, you know, the gentleman in the room, to our town staff, to our, our legal team, this is, Tom mentioned it, a public-private partnership, and, and amazing one. But I want to point out that this is not the first one with you guys. The one that I have to say, because I need to get the word out there, was the dendritic development that you guys agreed to. I saw that as a win. I think some others did, too, and I truly appreciate you guys coming to the table on that. Secondly, lastly, maybe not quite as big, but the firehouse. Again, here you are, willing to talk and meet and move things. And then, lastly, this one is, is obviously huge, absolutely amazing. I think that the staff that we have is amazing. We're not always the easiest to work with, and there are some developers that don't like that, and I don't mind that. But when we do get to work with you guys, and when we do get to work with the great developers that we do demand in this town, we see great things, and this is a great example of that. So I thank you, gentlemen, for being in this room tonight, and I thank staff for, for making this happen. Well done.
Council, any other comments? Okay, then, Jim, are we going to do two motions? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on the Fourth Amendment to the amended and restated Stro Ranch Hess Annexation Agreement.
I move to approve the Fourth Amendment to amend and restated Stro Ranch Hess Annexation Agreement.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Barrington, seconded by Councilmember Dyak. Please vote on the amendment. And that passes unanimously, and I'll entertain a motion on Resolution Number 21-022.1.
I'll take the easy one.
Okay.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-022.1.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Rivera. And that passes unanimously. So just as a point of personal privilege here, I just want to, now that the voting is done, and it's a good deal, I just want to say, Tom, thank you so much for all your hard work on this. You know, not everyone knows, but Tom went to every HOA meeting with me where Steve and Arlen would question us and question us, and, and you were right there with me to give the good information, so thank you for all that. And Steve and Arlen, thank you for being relentless. Arlen, I didn't get it done by summer, but I got it pretty close right now, so. But, but thank you guys, honestly, for holding us accountable, and thank you for the compliment on behalf of the council for us listening. You know, every council member, and I speak for Councilmember Hendricks and Councilmember Hefdo's not here, listened, and they were all on board with this, and, and were ready to go, to, to get this going as fast as we could. But to, to you three, thank you guys so much for stepping up. This, this private partner, public, private-public partnership, as Councilman Rivera, it's not the first one that we've had with you. It won't be the last one. It won't be the last time we come ask you for something. But, so just fair warning. But, but thank you, guys. This is going to escalate and fix a problem significantly faster than we could have done it, so thank you. On behalf of all of us at Parker, thank you for that. And with that, we'll move on to item number 9B, Town of Parker Policy Manual.
Mayor and council, Michelle Kivela, town administrator, and I'm going to talk to you about both resolutions before you, Resolution 21-051 and 21-052. We have the Town of Parker Policy Manual, which consolidates town and Parker policies adopted by council resolution. It's a reference document that is both accessible and transparent, compiling all of the different town policies into one document. And so with that, the two resolutions before you tonight, Resolution 21-051 amends the council liaison policy, which is policy number 1-12, and Resolution 21-052 creates the consent agenda policy, which is a new policy, policy number 1-13. Just a quick summary on both of these. The council liaison policy 1-12 has been amended, or is being amended tonight, to include an appointment process for council liaison assignments. The purpose of this policy is to define the process by which council liaison appointments are identified and assigned, as well as identifying and defining the roles and responsibilities of those council liaisons, and differentiate between the council liaisons and other appointments made by council to various boards, agencies, and community groups. It also provides agencies and community groups with clarity to the role and expectations. And so that Resolution 21-51 amends that current policy statement to include and update with regard to those purposes. The second resolution, Resolution 21-52, is a new council policy, that would be policy 1-13, which identifies items for consent agenda. The consent agenda streamlines the council meeting procedures by grouping items considered to be routine, administrative, or non-controversial, and such do not require discussion, into a single agenda item that can be passed with a single motion and vote. The consent agenda is a method to handle routine matters coming before the city council, or town council, sorry. You didn't hear that. I just breezed right over that. Or Green Village, or, you know, there's, there's a lot of places I've been where it was city, you know. And Bo didn't hear that, because, you know, I, I talked to him about it for, like, weeks when I get her started here. Never say city. So with that, though, transparency and accountability are the foundations to success with regard to the consent agenda. The consent agenda allows for more efficiency with citizens and staff time regarding routine items. And so the new council agenda policy that's being proposed for the consent defines and identifies those items to be placed on the consent agenda. And with that, that's my presentation.
Excellent. All right, council, let's take these one at a time. Let's take anything first on the council liaison policy. Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Dyak? Councilman Pogue?
Yes, why was there no written summary in the agenda tonight?
There was.
It didn't come up for me, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, so there is a council action form, which I just actually read from, and then the two policies are in there, which define the changes.
It's under the...
I looked many times, and mine did not open up.
Okay, Councilman Rivera?
I, I have no questions.
Okay. Awesome. So if there's no other questions on that, let's open this for a moment of public hearing, seeing nobody in the room. Danette, do we have anybody on Zoom?
There's nobody on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the councils for any comments or any debate. We'll start the same way. Councilmember Barrington? Dyak? Cheryl, anything else on...
Not on this one.
Comments? Josh?
No, no, sir.
Okay, then if there's none, I will entertain a motion on Resolution Number 21-051.
Mr. Mayor moved to approve Resolution Number 21-051, sir.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilwoman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Please vote when prompted on the council liaison policy. And that passes four to zero. Council, any questions on the consent agenda items? Councilmember Pogue, any questions?
Obviously, you left the amount at $500,000.
Correct, that is the direction I was getting from council.
All right.
Anything else, Cheryl, on that?
No, I don't have anything else.
No, sir.
Josh? John? Okay, we will open it for a moment of public comment on Resolution 21-052. Danette, do we have anybody?
No, nobody on Zoom.
Unless Commander Lavelle wants to make a comment on it. No? He doesn't want. All right, with no public comment, council will bring it back for any comments or debate?
Yes, I still feel 500,000 defeats the purpose of transparency.
Councilwoman Rivera?
I understand Councilwoman Pogue's still, hasn't got the number she liked, but what we did here was identify that one member of council wasn't satisfied with how we were doing things, and we talked about it, and we met about it. And the goal, whether we're always in agreement or not, is to try to reach consensus, and I think that this is a perfect example of, of the other five, or the other four, or whatever it is, the majority listening to the minority and, and trying to work for the best process. The benefits, not only to council, but of course, obviously, the citizens, but also our staff. And this is a good example of, of council getting together and, and trying to reach a consensus, and I'm very, very proud of this resolution.
Excellent. Councilmember Barrington?
There was a, a lot of debate on, on this and compromise, and I am also really happy with how everyone came together, and everybody had to give a little bit. But I think in the end, we're still being transparent, and the, the information is still there. It does just streamline the, the process, and I think a lot of people are probably very grateful for that.
Councilmember Dyak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have is, is, you know, this, the contracts are sort of a, a matter of process and procedure. We, we have, within a holistic budget process, know where the money's going. When we do enact or, or award a contract, we see it. And, you know, to me, we also have it brought to us in a study session as well. So again, from a transparency standpoint, there are multiple stops along the way to get to this consent agenda item from a contract standpoint, so I'm, I'm satisfied with where we're at.
Okay. Council, with that, we'll close that out, and I'll entertain a motion on Resolution Number 21-052.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-052.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Barrington, seconded by Councilwoman Rivera. Please vote on Resolution 21-052.
I'm not ready to give up my spot yet.
I know, don't. Don't get caught yet. All right, and that passes four to zero.
I had to wait.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next, on to the Greater Parker Foundation, the last item of the night. So Greater Parker Foundation has two resolutions on it, a Resolution 21, sorry, 21-044, a resolution to approve the amended and restated Articles of Incorporation and the amended and restated bylaws of the Greater Parker Foundation, and last Resolution Number 21-015, a resolution to appoint the Board of Directors of the Greater Parker Foundation. Mr. Maloney?
The Greater Parker Foundation is the last item for the evening.
But don't turn off your computers yet.
So there's three items associated with this agenda item. The first item is the amended and restated Articles of Incorporation for the Greater Parker Foundation. The second item is the amended and restated bylaws of the Greater Parker Foundation. And the third item is the appointment of Ann Barrington in place of Jeff Toburg to be on the Board of Directors for the Greater Parker Foundation. And then I'll, I'll try to be brief, given the lateness of the hour. I, I could go line by line through the articles and the bylaws, if you'd like. But by way of background, the town council approved the original Articles of Incorporation and bylaws on November 3, 2008, and recently, the town council retained Karen Leifer, who modernized the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws. And the amended and restated articles and bylaws were prepared by Karen after consultation with you, mayor and council, and they are attached to your council action form in your packet. And unless you have any specific questions, I will just provide that very brief overview of those three items.
Excellent. So council, we'll take this as, as to, I, I don't assume we want to debate Ann taking my spot, so good luck with that. But we'll go ahead and, and have a conversation about the Articles of Incorporation. Cheryl, we'll start with you on that. Any questions?
Yeah, I think, you know, the revisions that I've seen in both documents are good revisions, and I think it moves us in a direction where we can move this foundation forward, and that's what I'm looking forward to.
Excellent. John?
Yeah, I guess just more of a high, high-level question. What are the next steps if council does approve this? What are those next steps, you know, other than appointing Ann? What do, what do these board, what do these members do moving forward?
So once you approve the articles and the bylaws as amended and restated, then the Greater Parker Foundation Board will have a meeting, and at that meeting, they will also approve the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws as the board, and then they will also appoint officers. And then they'll start conducting business. Now, they can also decide whether or not they want to expand the board. And so right now, the way the articles and bylaws are set up, there are two board members, and they're both council members, Cheryl and Ann. The board can be expanded up to eight ultimately, but again, that's a board action.
And just conducting business, what does, what does that mean? And what is the, what do they have to do relative to, to council? Are there certain things where they would have to come back to council to get a blessing per se, or they just conduct business as they see fit?
Any changes to the articles or bylaws that require prior town council approval?
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington? Anything on that? Okay, awesome. Then we will open this up for, oh, sorry.
Yes, I think there's also provision in there for, you know, funding.
Oh, yeah.
Certain levels of funding have to come back to council.
And then one, one benefit out of all of this is, in addition to finding Karen Leifer, is that Karen will serve now as legal counsel for the Greater Parker Foundation and help the foundation get in some policies that, that need to be in place. And I think a lot of this will be part of your discussion during your, your first meeting that you'll convene with Ann on the board.
Josh, did you have any comments?
Do not, sir.
Okay, awesome. All right, let's go for a public comment on Resolutions 21-044 and 21-015.
There are no members of the public present.
All right, seeing none. Council, if there's any other comments, or we can go right to a motion on these.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 21-044.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Rivera. And that passes unanimously, and I will entertain a motion on Resolution 21-015.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-015.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Rivera. And that passes unanimously, and with no other business for the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
May I make a comment first?
There's a motion on the table.
Well, no, there's no motion.
No, there's not.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff and Mr. Maloney here, and... and welcome Ann to a whole bunch of new work.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, Madam Vice President and Treasurer. Dual roles. Congratulations, you didn't know it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn this meeting, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Please vote, or we can do a voice vote.
Got it.
All right, got it. We're adjourned at 9:26. Thank you, everyone.